Thank you. Okay, at seven o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board of Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. I'll ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. For those who would like to join the meeting via Zoom with their smartphone, computer, laptop, tablet, for the purposes of public comment only, you can do so by using the Zoom application on your device. Tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to participate via phone, you can do so by dialing 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. Again, these are for people who would like to make remote comments during the public comment, either at the beginning or end of the meeting. The posted agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So I ask if there is any public comment tonight from the board?
None.
Yes, I have a comment. Since Mr. Jeffries couldn't be here this evening, he asked that I, on his behalf, remind people to remember our veterans as Veterans Day approaches and to reach out to their friends and family members who are veterans and try to spend time with them.
Thank you. I was going to say the same, so I'm glad that that was said. And for those people who get confused by the various days, Veterans Day is for anybody who served in the military, as opposed to Memorial Day, which officially is for those who died in battle. And Armed Services Day is for everybody who's currently serving and who has served. So just to round that out, any public comment from the public? Mr. Weaver. Good to see you in attendance again.
Thank you. Steve Weaver, 288 Holman Street. I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to thank Jim Marino for all his service and everything to the town of Lunenburg, and we're going to miss him a lot. He was a good person. I expected him to be here tonight. I didn't know that. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that I was listening to the Selectmen's meeting last week, and I was listening to the Finance Committee meeting also, as I do. And I'm very concerned about Articles 6, 7, and 8, the TCP, going forward. I think it's pretty irresponsible that, you know, if we go forward with them. I'm trying to take you back here, that when these were first brought up, the Chair, Tom Alonso, suggested that if we bring any of these buildings to town meeting, we should do it one at a time. And I thought that, you know, by handling the primary school, that was the one that was your goal, and that was the one that you should be concentrating on. The TCP, I think, has been rushed through, and it's been really pushed to try to get it on, on this special town meeting. And I think it's a mistake for the town. And the reason being is that Mr. Jeffries, Selectman Jeffries, isn't here tonight to defend this, but I remember when he first brought it up, and his reasoning for it was because he didn't want Town Hall 1, Town Hall 2, Town Hall 3. There was nothing about the conditions of the buildings or anything like that. It was more of a convenience than it was a necessity. And so to have that type of price tag on a building, I just think it's outrageous. And I still have a hard time thinking that after the pandemic of a year where people worked from home, do we need it? And I'm just wondering, with all the construction that's going on in town, if the schools aren't going to be overcrowded, and we're going to need that space for school space. So I wanted to stress a point about passing over those articles and think that it's in the best interest of the town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from the public? Any announcements?
None.
We did get an announcement of a filing of a public hearing from the Department of Public Utilities, the DPU, regarding the three-year plan that Unitil has filed with them. I will have asked the town manager to put this on our website, but basically they're going to have a public hearing. It's going to be a virtual public hearing on Wednesday, December 1st, and Thursday, December 2nd. The one on Wednesday, December 1st, will begin at 7:00 PM. The one on Thursday, December 2nd, will begin at 2:00 PM. Their instructions, if you would like to speak at those, they want to know in advance so they can prepare the timing. And it has to do with their three-year plan. Not surprisingly, their three-year plan includes a rate increase. So people will want, people who may want to, this is the information. I'll bring it up again at our next meeting, which is at the 23rd, is our next Selectment meeting. But until then, I will try to get the notice on the website so people are aware. Appointment 705, the Tax Classification Hearing as Required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, on the issue of allocating the local property tax levy among the four classes of real and personal property.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Select Board members and Town Manager. Christine Kumar, the Principal Assessor. Now that the assessors' values have been approved by the Department of Revenue, we're here to hold a public classification hearing for the Select Board to consider classification options under Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 56, to decide whether to have a single rate across all classes, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property, or a split tax rate, one rate for residential, and a different, generally higher, rate for commercial, industrial, and personal property. In the handout you received, at the top of Page 5, you will see the percentage of the tax levy for each class. I'm just going to read through those percentages quickly. The residential, 91.0772%. Commercial, 4.314%. Industrial, 1.4121%. And personal property, 3.1967%. The maximum value share of the tax levy for commercial, industrial, and personal property is 150%. If you turn back to Page 3, at the bottom of the page, you'll see the results of that maximum tax shift. The commercial and industrial property classes would increase quite a lot, to 13.38%, whereas the residential class would only shift down to about 86.62%. Split tax rate is generally adopted by communities with a larger commercial and industrial property base, like Worcester. So historically, the Board has recommended a residential factor of 1, which results in a single tax rate. If you turn to Page 4, I can give you a brief overview of the finances, or financials. The maximum allowable levy is $29,959,875.36. The appropriations from the May 1st Annual Town Meeting were a total of 44,000, excuse At next week's special town meeting, if approved, there would be an additional $398,575.20, bringing the total appropriations to $44,633,291.54. If we add to that the amount certified for tax title purposes, cherry sheet offsets, the Worcester Regional Retirement, state and cherry sheet charges, and the allowances for abatements and exemptions, we get to the total amount to be raised of $47,608,648.54. So with that total, we would then deduct the estimated receipts and other revenue sources, which this figure came from the accountant, $17,655,261.21, bringing our tax levy estimate That's a lot to say, pardon me. But that is the amount that would need to be raised through real estate and personal property taxes. And I just want to make a note, where you see the asterisks by the cherry sheet offsets and the cherry sheet charges, those are actually the fiscal '22 cherry sheet estimate numbers, not '21. Let's see. On the next page, so back to Page 5, you see that the excess levy capacity is $6,488.3. Below that, there's a 10-year history of the excess levy capacity. And then at the bottom of Page 5, there's a comparison of assessed value for fiscal year '21 and '22. The overview, residential increased by 7.11%. Commercial increased 0.9%. Industrial saw a decrease of 2.38%. And personal property increased 18.33%. And just a note with regard to the commercial and industrial, those properties had not been reviewed or inspected in a few years, and some had been misclassified, but they've now been corrected or reclassified through a full measure and list that took place, that Sue Byrne, the previous assessor, had arranged for. On Page 6, we just have the real estate and personal property values by class. And then on Page 7, we have a five-year history of the average single-family home. As you can see, it includes the tax rate, the average single-family home assessment, and the average tax bill. The average single-family home value has increased approximately $91,400, or about 33% over the last five years. The average single-family home tax bill has increased about $860.84, or about 15.44%. And that's over the last five years. Below that are the town's top 10 taxpayers, which seemed to be popular at the last classification hearing. Having said all that, at this time, the Board of Assessors would like to recommend a residential factor of 1, which would result in a single tax rate across all four classes, and the proposed tax rate, pending approval by the DOR, is $17.19. And that's it.
Any questions for the principal assessor?
I have no questions.
You say the top 10 tax, oh, okay. I guess we could calculate it. I was going to say, you're giving the assessed value, not what their taxes are.
Yes, we could change that for next year.
It's just another column, I guess you just got to add.
Exactly.
Multiply by the tax rate.
Yep.
Lou, any questions?
I have no questions, just a comment. And this is basically what I expected, because when I was on the Board of Assessors, that was our thinking too, was that the percentage commercial is so low that you're not going to really create a huge impact, or a positive impact for residents, and you're going to create an impediment to commercial.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay. Like nostalgia week for you. I would entertain a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Board of Assessors for the single tax rate in Lunenburg for the next fiscal year.
I think that's in the form of motion already, so so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A request for the Salvation Army toll booth fundraiser, Ms. Valentine, an escort.
Dave McConnell, 155 Island Road.
I'm Lynette Valentine Warren, 155 Cracyak, Pittsburgh.
First thing we want to do is also express our appreciation to Mr. Marino, who retired and moved away, which is a very sad day for myself. Mr. Marino and I did a lot of projects together for the town, from crime watching neighborhoods and fundraisers and stuff like that. So, Mr. Marino, I know you're out there, we wish you well. Tonight, we're here, I want to thank you for seeing us tonight, Madam Town Manager and Board. Before we talk about the boot drive, as you know, I like to talk about what we do. So we want to update what's been happening for the Salvation Army, and not only for the communities we serve, but especially Lunenburg, what we've been doing. So as you all know, and most of you have helped on boot drives, and Lynette will be going in there in a second, the funds that we collect stay here locally. When I say locally, it's Pittsburgh, Leominster, and Lunenburg. Even though we are a nationwide organization, monies we do stay here. In Lunenburg this year, I'm very proud to say that we've done quite a bit. We've done it, tried to do it under the QT, but we do do a lot. And one of the things we did was we sat down, the Advisory Board and Lynette, it was just so overwhelming last year. And again, you guys were part of it, from our toy parade, through our donut drives, to try to get back to the community, to our boot drives, to our Angel programs. It was an amazing year. But we sat down and said, we can't do this alone. And what we've been doing is, not only are we still trying to get volunteers, but we took organizations in Lunenburg and supported them. So they're our outreach. They're the ones who actually helped us. And examples of that would be the Senior Center. The Senior Center, we provided programs, and remember the farm company who gave us the food baskets? It was a national, it was the.
Farmer's market.
It was a farmer's market. It was done through the National Guard of Massachusetts. You might have seen it on TV, they're delivered in the boxes, as of the Salvation Army. These were meals for a family for a week. So we donated quite a few of those to the Senior Center, who in turn, their volunteers went and delivered them with the Meals on Wheels program. So that was very satisfying. We also gave the Senior Center a lot of different food for their pantries and their pancake breakfasts and so on, which, by the way, Mr. Franco, the pancake breakfast is tomorrow at the Senior Center.
You can do that.
We also supported, your lady was a good friend of the Salvation Army, is Pam Porter. Pam Porter, last year, came to us and asked for donations for her coat drive. Well, Salvation Army last year was very honored to receive a very big donation from Macy's of prom dresses. And I think everybody around has prom dresses. We gave them to every organization that we can think of, from here to Worcester and north. But we're very excited to help Pam, again, back that up. We will be giving Pam some more donations, as we got them as well, for the Lunenburg people. Last thing we'd like to do is that food is very important right now. As you know, the prices of food is outrageous, and it's going to get worse. And we're feeling that now, at the Corps, and we're reaching levels now that we had pre, or I should say during COVID. So Lunenburg Lions Club has been very, very dear to us over the years, as well as the Pittsburgh Lions Club and all the Lions Clubs, actually. But the Lunenburg Lions Club has a food pantry that we've been supporting, and we're very proud of what we did for the Lunenburg Lions Club. Over the last year, we've donated 15,000 pounds of food for the Lunenburg area. So we take great pride in that. So if people say that we're involved, yes. And the reason that we're involved is because we can't do it alone. We need these organizations to help us, to help you, and to help the citizens of Lunenburg, Leominster, and Pittsburgh. So that's why we're here today, to talk about not only what we've done in Lunenburg, but I want to let Lynette talk about the boot drives and where that monies go. Lynette?
It's a pleasure always to be here, and thank you. I want to talk about the boot drives. It's not really a boot, it's a bucket. And the military, the ROTC's, will stand out in the middle of the road, along with the volunteers, to hold out the bucket and let drive buyers put money in to help support our Kettle Campaign. The Kettle Campaign runs from November 15th until Christmas Eve. Our goal is $100,000 to raise in a very short amount of time. So the boot drives are very essential to this program. I believe we raised almost $26,000 in the middle of the road. People always want a number, I'm going to give you a number. They're vital to our campaign. And we're proud to say that the money that came in, we did hit our goal last year, and we're striving to hit it again this year, and we can't do it without the support of the communities we serve. So we are asking if we could have permission to hold our boot drive on November 13th, or no, November, December 11th. We're starting our boot drive November 13th in Pittsburgh, but on December 11th. And on that day, we're also putting the challenges out to the Selectmen and the Mayors. And I do believe, Tom Alonso, you've accepted that challenge, and we're excited about that to see what we can do. Again, without the help of the community and the people putting money in the buckets, a lot of things that we do would be more difficult. And we just want to say thank you in advance for considering, and also thank you to everyone who acknowledged us last year and the years prior to make our campaign a success.
Thank you.
With that, if you're going back to what we talked about, Mr. Alonso, just so you know for the record, you came in second last year. Very disappointed, you should have came in first. So I challenge all the.
The Avis of boot drive.
At least you didn't get hit by a car. I challenge everybody in Lunenburg to come out on your day, and I think the hours we selected was 11 to 12. I think that's.
Yeah, 11 to 12, yep.
So we challenge everybody at home.
I'm planning on being out there more, but that's the official.
Official hour, with your bucket, yes.
But with your bucket, you'll be front and center, and from 11 to 12 is when it starts, and I hope you win the championship of the most money received. I also got to thank Mr. Dwyer.
Can you tell people who don't know what the challenge is between the three towns?
You really want me to tell you? No.
Yes, of course. We want people to get excited about this.
We've been very fortunate to work with the Mayors of Pittsburgh and Leominster, who have been great for us, especially after the year that we had. I mean, between the fires in Leominster, the fires in Pittsburgh, if you remember, back early in the summer, there was fires every day, and we're out there every day. So with this challenge, the Mayors have been great. So, and Tom, we're going to throw you in there to hold a bucket for one hour, and the hours that we picked was from 11 to 12 on the 11th. And whoever gets the most money will win the challenge, and that's it. Maybe a trophy, we don't know yet. But anyways, Mr. Alonso, last year, did it for an hour, and you collected quite a bit of money, actually, and we thank you for that. In fact, last year was the most money we picked up in Lunenburg ever. And, you know, you're a part of that. So again, from our hearts to you, thank you, we appreciate it. And Mr. Dwyer, we appreciate your help, you're always there. And we hope you're going to join us this year, and maybe Lou, you can come and join us for a bit. And it's always good to talk to the people in town. But also, what we just talked about was organizations that need help. Salvation Army is, like we just said, is a very big organization, but if you feel you need to give, it doesn't have to be Salvation Army, it could be to any one of the organizations we just talked about prior to, or it could be something in your own heart, or it could be a church, or it could be a child on the street. But one of the things that we do that's very dear to me is, Christmas morning, I believe every child should have a toy to open up. And that's been my wife and I go, and I'm proud to say, just with my wife and I, we collect over 1,200 toys during the holiday season. And how do we do that? I kind of hounded you a little bit, but Lynette's going to talk about our Angel program, and this is where we're starting as well.
Just for another moment of your time, the Angels are really important, and I had the pleasure of watching a movie the other night. It's called Paper Angels, and it's free on demand. And it talks about the Salvation Army and what they do for children in the community. Families are in hardship right now, COVID has affected everybody, but we're seeing a different class of people come in right now. It's the people that are working, who don't have extra to provide Christmas. So this year, the incline and the increase of toys and families that are in need. So what they do, and we've been doing appointments since September, interviewing families from the area, Pittsburgh, Leominster, and Lunenburg, and each child that's on the list, there's an angel made. And we're putting these on the trees. They'll be in the trees in Walmart, and they'll be handed out. Businesses, I believe Heather, the town, took 25 angels last year. We're hoping you'll do it again. We can have them ready and drop off. But like Dave said, a toy being under a tree for Christmas is exactly what we're trying to accomplish here. And with the help of everybody taking an angel and making a Christmas Day special for a child, that's what we're doing.
What we're trying to do this year is get people excited, like you just said, Mr. Alonso. It's very difficult to get excited when you see a lot of people in need. But what makes us excited is seeing a child receiving something, is seeing that family get help. And people say, you know, you got the government helping you this and that, that's not true. I mean, what's happening right now is the price of inflation is killing a lot of people, especially the elderly. I don't know if you guys went to the store lately and bought a dozen of eggs and a gallon of milk, it is kind of hard. So that's why our food pantries are really getting out of control, and we want to help. So please, at home, we have a Christmas tree at the Corps, it's called the Tree Lights. If you have a business out there, or any business people want to donate to that, once you reach a goal, that tree lights up, just like a thermometer, until the star is lit. And that star lit means that we reached our goal, and hopefully it gives a light to help other people. So that's kind of our message for the evening, and I just want to thank you for your time. And one more thing I have to mention, it was a good year for us, but it was a crazy year. And one of the crazy things was that Lynette, I've known her for seven years, she's not Lynette Valentine anymore, she's Lynette Valentine Warren. So congratulations. She got married in August, and she's still glowing from it.
Thank you. If I could say one more thing, last year during the Christmas campaign, it was rescue Christmas, and the towns rescued Christmas. This year, hope marches on, and we tend to bring hope to the families who are in despair.
So if you guys have any questions, that's, we're here to get the approval for the boot drive, and again, figuring out what we've been doing for this year. And again, most of you guys have been helping me during the course of the year.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't. No questions.
I will say that for those people who equate, and many people do, you know, the Salvation Army with Christmas, with the bread kettles and everything, I can tell, because I know both of you very well, that the work that you do is incredible, and it's year-round, and this year probably more than most, although it's pretty banner in every year, the work that you do, whether it's from natural disasters or personal disasters with fires and floods and things like that. But of course, with pandemic, it's been a lot worse this year. I can't say enough, and I'm very proud of the work that you do and your organizations, and the organizations that you work with. I mean, what you have said, Mr. McDonald, that you are, you know, the Salvation Army reaching out to other organizations to assist in a larger way that any individual organization couldn't, is so important, and it's really impressive the way that gets put together. I'm honored to be a help in any way that I can. And I would hope that people would give on these drives anyway, but if they need the extra incentive to put us over the top, because remember that Lunenburg only has 11,000 people compared to Pittsburgh, which has like 30,000, and Leominster 40, so we'd like to see that over the top. And if it takes a little friendly competition to do that for a great cause, more than happy to do it.
I'd like to see the name of the top 10 taxpayers in town, I'd be willing to talk about.
Well, yeah, you could go, yeah, exactly. Perfect timing. Perfect timing. Perfect timing. So maybe get free gravel for everybody.
Okay, we'll take it.
I would entertain a motion regarding the issue at hand, which is the boot drive on December 11th from 10 to 2 at Electric Ave and Whalem Road, correct? In the center of town, those two?
I move we approve the boot drive on December 11th from 10 to 2 in the center of town.
And Electric Ave?
And Electric Ave.
Now second. Any further discussion? Well, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. I look forward to seeing everybody out there. I'll make sure, please send me reminders and I will make sure people know about these drives in coming selectman meetings.
Okay, we have, Betty and I have these now. So if anybody wants them, Betty will start sending out emails tomorrow to pick up angels. And again, we, from the bottom of our hearts to you guys, it's been tough for you to govern in a town during a pandemic. So we appreciate what you guys have for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. It was great seeing you both. Do we want to, we can do this early, right? Or do we want to go with, you want to do the water commitment?
Sure.
While we wait for our 7:40, let's do the current business, the second quarter FY22 Water Commission, Water Commitment. So remember, this is not the Water District. This is the Water Department, which is a tiny department in town that services just a handful of clients at the Fitchburg line. So this is the commitment, the second quarter billing is $10,624.14. Do I have a motion to accept and sign the Water Commitment of FY22, the second quarter?
I move we accept and sign the second quarter Water Commitment in the sum of $10,624.14.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Well, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Just the two top sheets?
Yes.
There you go. How long is your town manager report?
I can fit that in.
All right, let's go to the town manager reports.
It's easier to do this way. So I'll start with announcement of existing vacancies. There are two vacancies in the Architectural Preservation District Commission. There are now two vacancies on the Economic Development Committee. The Planning Board filled the citizen-at-large position. There are just one regular vacancy and two associate vacancies in the Green Communities Committee and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested can fill out application forms that are found on the town website, complete them and submit them to the Select Board's office. As far as current employment opportunities with the town, there is a part-time benefited position for an assistant accountant, a part-time benefited digital services staff librarian position, a part-time position for the assistant to the sewer business manager, and part-time non-benefited for public access videographers. And those job postings are also found on the town website under Employment Opportunities for more information on those openings. An update on COVID from the Board of Health. Their weekly update with the total number of cases, new cases reported as of October 30th was 36. And the current positivity rate for Lunenburg as of the same date, October 30th, was 4.33%. Today, I had a meeting with the DPW Director, the Facilities Director and the Architect, working on three different projects for the town. The public safety building chiller replacement project. He's currently waiting on information from the mechanical and electrical engineers. As soon as the architect receives this information, the project will be set up for a final review from town officials and be put out to bid. A few details about this project is that the replacement chiller will be larger in size than the existing chiller, as it is a larger unit now. And this means that the generator will need to be moved, the concrete pad that the generator sits on will need to be extended, and the fence on the pavement side will need to be replaced as well. For the Ritter Building Accessible Entrance and Exterior Building Envelope Repairs, the accessible walkway has been fully designed and will incorporate an accessible entrance. The architect is in the process of identifying the areas of existing damage to the building according to the Vertex Property Condition Assessment and designing the vestibule, as this is, this needs to be expanded towards the interior to get seven feet between the interior doors and exterior doors at the accessible entrance to the building. The design will include a replacement of the doors to be ADA compliant. And when the walkway project is underway, part of the work will be to move all the planting against the building to other grassy areas away from the building. Plants against the foundation add to moisture problems for the building. All the exterior repairs will need to be submitted for administrative review to the Architectural Preservation District Commission. But one question that came up with the architect that will need to be answered when approaching the APDC is whether we want to replace the shutters on that building. The wood shutters were removed some time ago to clean the exterior of the building and also due to their deterioration. To replace them with wooden shutters would be costly and they, as the architect pointed out, they're decorative, not operational to shutter the windows. So that's not a decision that needs to be made tonight, but just will need to be made at that point where we need to submit to APDC. For the Town Hall Building Envelope Project, that includes the chimney and clock tower repairs. The Town Hall exterior repairs include chimney, roofing, repairs needed to the clock tower in order to be able to reinstall the weather vane and a list of other exterior repairs. The architect has drawings of the exterior ready for indicating the current repair work that was identified in the Vertex Property Condition Assessment. And the design of the structural modifications for the clock tower is almost complete. All the exterior repairs will need to be submitted for administrative review, again, to the Architectural Preservation District Commission. And a few questions that came up with the architect today that will need to be answered before we submit was whether we want to remove and not replace the chimneys. And there's also ventilator on the roof that ties into a non-functional gravity exhaust system. The architect pointed out that the chimneys are not functional and that leaving something there that doesn't get used is more detrimental to the building. As well as if it were rebuilt, we will be rebuilding it with 2022 bricks and not original style bricks. In terms of the ventilator, the Facilities Director recommends removing it as it poses another risk of water or other elements entering the building, the roof. Now, there are meeting announcements for yard waste days, the old landfill off of Young's Road. The remaining days are November 12th and November 20th from 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM. And the special town meeting is next Tuesday at the Middle School, High School at 7:00 PM in the auditorium.
Any questions for the town manager?
None.
Perfectly timed for our 7:40 appointment. So we have a joint appointment to the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds that will serve until May 2022's annual town election. And they are Elena Corcoran of Nine Lancaster Ave and Nicole Waters of 80 Horizon Island Road. So let's take them in order that they were listed here. So Elena Corcoran.
Yes.
Please, come on down.
Hello.
So I would, my normal question would be if you introduce yourself?
Okay.
And then why you want to be on the Commissioner of Trust Funds?
Okay, Elena Corcoran. I've been in the town, lived in Lunenburg for almost 30 years now, believe it or not. I'm aging myself. I have two children, brought up in Lunenburg, went through the school system. I volunteer very often. I'm part of the Lions Club. I'm a notary. I'm a justice of the peace. I'm a volunteer for the LUC organization to help broken children and a mentor for one. And that's not, and then I have a COO of an engineering firm, so I run the business. And I thought, at this point in my life, I'd like to do something for the town. And my friend Corinne is on the commission and told me about the opening, so here I am. I'd like to help.
Excellent. Did she tell you what they do?
Well, I'm not quite, well, she did. She kind of gave me a brief overview and I did my research, but there's about two sentences on the website about it, so it's not a lot. But I kind of just assumed that trust fund means money and requests for money and deciding and helping to decide what you do with that. You know, whether it's a resident or the town that needs to access the funds. And we would meet and discuss that. Am I close?
Yeah, well, basically it's making decisions about trust funds that, I don't know exactly how they come into existence, whether they were donations.
I think they were donated, so they'll be-
People bequeathed them and then we have obviously the obligation to take care of those. And then how they get invested and what they get invested in and how, if anything, they get used or modified, so.
Okay.
So yes, you were-
I was kind of close.
95% there.
All good.
Any questions for Ms. Corcoran?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Thank you for coming forward and volunteering and I look forward to supporting your nomination.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I second that appreciation. Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
I don't have any other questions either. I too appreciate you volunteering and volunteering for, you know, one of the, one of the least known, as you have indicated, and probably, you know, of, if this is something you could say about public bodies, you know, any committee or anything, the least sexy of all of the, like, doesn't get a large profile, doesn't get a lot of press, but-
I'm thinking I start somewhere, right?
No, but it's a job that has to be done and it's not in the appointment one. I mean, it's an elected. And hopefully you will run to, you know, for re-elect, well, not reelection, but you will run for the position in May so that we don't leave Corinne out in the, out with being the one person in the desert of trust funds.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion regarding the appointment of Elena Corcoran of Nine Lancaster Ave to serve on the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds until May 2022 annual town election.
I move to appoint Elena Corcoran to the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds until May 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? Well, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you should go and see the town clerk. You get sworn in.
Okay.
And then we'll, I'll probably be saying that again in about four minutes from now. But then you can finally set up a meeting with your commission.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nicole Waters? I will say the same question. So introduce yourself and why you want to be on the Commission of Trust Funds.
Sure. So Nicole Waters, I've lived in Lunenburg here since about 1998 or so. I don't have as many law wing credentials as Lynn, but honestly, I just heard that the committee couldn't meet because they didn't have enough people. I have the time contracting, part-time software engineer, and so I opted to volunteer just so we could have a committee and try to help people in Lunenburg, really. That's what I thought the commission actually does. So you guys can tell me differently.
No, well, like I said, it oversees trust funds that came into the town's possession in several ways, but generally their people's wills or they, while they were alive, they established a trust fund for whatever reasons, so. But thank you for coming forward. I appreciate the class of Lunenburg 1998 because that's when I moved into town. So any questions for Ms. Waters?
None. I'd just like, again, to reiterate my thanks for you coming forward. It's greatly appreciated when people step forward for the town and I look forward to supporting your nomination.
Same, thank you.
Yep, I know all the work you do other places, so thank you for that as well.
Sure.
And I'm just appreciative that we have now, that fills out the board, right? The commission, three? Okay. Is that strange silence at the town caucus when they've mentioned certain positions and there's just nobody? And we know we have to fill them and we did that with the Board of Assessors. We had two openings and we had to fill. And now your commission will in about a minute be filled. So I would entertain a motion regarding the confirmation of the appointment, well, not confirmation, but the appointment of Nicole Waters to the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds until May 22.
I move we appoint Nicole Waters to the Board of Commissioner of Trust Funds until May 2022.
For a second, second. Any further discussion? Well, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Same thing. Go get sworn in at the town clerk's office and then you two or you three are off to the races. So you can have a legal meeting. And if they, because I think Corinne is also, are you new to the board, fairly new?
Never been to a meeting.
Okay, so there we go. So if there's anybody who can assist, we should probably point them in that direction since basically we have a brand new commission.
Yeah, I would say start with the town treasurer, collector. She'll have a list of, or the finance director downstairs and you're familiar with their office.
And thank you both again for, well, all three of you, but thank you, the two who got appointed tonight for volunteering. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations?
No.
Discussion on the schedule of the Old Primary School Landscape Architectural Services Project. Wow, that was a, well. So now that we've awarded the contract for this, so we want to outline how we start and when we start.
Yes, so the proposed schedule from the contractor would initially meet with different public officials like myself, the DPW Director, the police chief, the land use director. People would have information like from their level of government about the site. So it would be looking at existing surveys, property boundaries, easements, utilities, topographical data, things like that, history. And then the December timeframe would, when the community meeting would be. And that would be who you'd invite for your different stakeholders, such as the Architectural Preservation District Commission or Parks Commission, Historical Society.
Okay, so the town department meeting would basically get everything kickstarted with all the documentation and all the legal stuff they need. And that can happen whenever, so I'll let you, I mean, you decide with your department heads when that should be.
Right, so we need, just need from the board to pick a date for the December meeting so we can invite the different stakeholders to give them plenty of notice.
So the first, the only comments I would have about the December meeting is sooner the better. And also, I think that the first meeting, at least one part of it, if we could make it early enough to make, to have an onsite component, maybe just for a half an hour to look at the site before we come back here to talk about it in a meeting, would be very helpful. To get everybody at the site who maybe not have seen it or to at least review and rehash a little bit of what has been done and what the vision has been to get everybody on the same footing and then come back to the meeting. That would be number one. And number two is, we definitely want to, I want to continue to extend my invitation to the APDC that I said they would on the initial meeting. Obviously, these are all going to be public meetings that the board is in, so everybody's always involved. But I want to specifically invite them because I said we would and I want to still encourage them to, you know, listen to and- and I want to still encourage them to, you know, listen to and see maybe what this contract, this landscape architect has done with some of the pictures that we saw, that maybe it appeals to their sensibilities of what we can do, you know, together. If we're not fighting for the restoration of the entire building, but some acknowledgement of the current building in, at the site. So those are the two, and then, of course, the Parks Commission makes sense because we're looking at making it a park. If anybody has any other suggestions of people who should be there.
I thought of another agricultural commission, the farmer's market.
The farmer's market, I think that's a good idea, too. The sooner that, the soonest that we can have that, the better. We don't want to lose time on that. And while the weather is non-snowed and the landscape architect can come back as much as they want to see what they want to do, I mean, eventually what they're going to need to come up with is going to take, you know, their office time to kind of brainstorm what kind of ideas they have. But as much as they can have access to the site before snow would be good.
Sure, which, seeing it's November, is not long.
Right, right.
Yeah, not only that, there's going to be a challenge, I mean, having, being able to do a site walk while it's still light out, I mean, the sun's setting at like four forty-five. So that's another issue.
True, true.
December seventh, would that work then? That's the first meeting in December.
Yeah, we can even have a different, we can have a different meeting.
Or a different night.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be during a selectman meeting. Now, I'm not, I mean, I don't know that December is going to be full of stuff once we have town, special town meeting, so we may have the bandwidth to do it.
No, the finance has a meeting on the ninth, December ninth. So this room wouldn't be available.
Okay, well, I mean, so the seventh is fine with me if it's fine with the rest of the board.
I have no issue with the seventh.
Yep, so let's, again, the sooner the better.
Yep, because the other things that happen in December are the annual licenses, liquor licenses, those licenses, and that can be on the following meeting.
I'm also not against having it on the thirtieth of November, the week before that. We don't have any meeting, just to have a special meeting, you know, kickoff meeting with that one agenda item.
We do have a long capital planning committee meeting that night.
Oh, okay, well, there you go, so that's. Ixnay on the third day. All right, let's do it for the seventh.
And I put together kind of a summary outline of, like, in the Google Drive with the, what's going to happen in November, December, January, February, and their contracts deadline is March first. So the timing was to coincide with getting a warrant article, if any, that's needed.
Well, that's, yeah, so that's the, our eye is on that prize. I mean, to get something done with this, because this has come, presumably this, this contract will get us to a point where this project can come to some fruition. Any questions about that? So you have the invitees?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I'm wondering, let me just throw, I just throw out the idea of maybe inviting the Economic Development Committee. I mean, you know, now that, I mean, since the farmer's market thing isn't there, I don't know. I mean, now we might be getting a little tenuous, but they might have an interest in it.
You can invite. I guess we should, the real must-haves are the board. The board is a must-have, I think the APDC would be almost a must-have.
I thought of one other person. Steve Archibald, who helps run the band concerts. Because if there's going to be a venue for that there.
Sure. That's optional, he's an optional, I think the economic development is optional. Park should be, should be involved, definitely. Okay. And again, if we can have a site visit, if it's not possible, I mean, if we, I don't know what the sundown is at. Probably, probably four thirty, maybe, so maybe not. Maybe we'll have to follow it up with one on a weekend like we did that, at Halloween. Any other thing, anybody else on that topic? Approval of minutes, do we have minutes?
I don't see any.
I'm going to leave that with you, if that's okay.
Okay.
Warrants, we have a payroll deduction warrant in the amount of forty thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. We have payroll.
Voided.
Reissued, voided and reissued to payroll for employment. So one of them is negative two thousand fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. And then one of them is twelve hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. So these are employee resignation, which is why they're on their own. Then we have the normal payroll in the amount of nine hundred nineteen thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. And, these are both, both accounts payable?
Yep.
All right, accounts payable in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents, which is basically two dollars per piece of paper here, I think. Well, I see something like that, I usually expect the one million mark and this one didn't even hit a half. Any action file issues? Okay, committee reports, Mr. Dwyer, any committee reports?
Yes, the Stormwater Task Force met after almost two-year hiatus since the start of the pandemic. The task force, for various reasons, hadn't been able to meet. So we had a Zoom meeting this past Thursday. For the folks at home who don't know, the Stormwater Task Force was established by this board in 2016 to come up with a stormwater management plan and the administration of the EPA's MS four permit. So that's the mission of the task force. So we went over in a recap of year two and year three of that permit and then we had some discussions on moving forward and meeting more regularly. So I believe it's going, we're going to meet the third Thursday of each month moving forward. So our next meeting will be on December, I believe it's December sixteenth, if I can check my calendar.
That would be the sixteenth, yep.
Yep, December sixteenth is our next meeting. One of the things that we'd like is to be put on the, to be put on this board's agenda is to add members to that Stormwater Task Force. We'd like to add two at-large members. What we found during this hiatus in meetings is that with so few members, getting a quorum was proved very difficult in trying to get everybody on the same page at the same time. So in an effort to be able to have more regular meetings, we'd like to expand the task force back to five members. I believe previously it was started with five or seven and it has shrunk over time. So that's one thing we'd like to be.
This board shrunk it, really? Did we shrink it?
There were some, basically ad hoc positions that were added.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, let, come prepared and send to the town manager, or if you can have Elaine send to us the latest composition so we're prepared.
Sure.
That'd be great. Yeah, I don't think we were in the habit of ever shrinking any committee because of that very reason.
Right, well, and currently the board's comprised of myself, Jack Rabbit, who sits on the Conservation Commission, and Paula Pertram, who's the Planning Board Representative.
Right, yeah, we need, I think at-large members is a good idea.
Agreed.
Any other committee reports?
None.
I have none, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I saw the second public hearing of the Finance Committee last Thursday, so that was held. There were three articles that they held it on, one of them was the fire union contract, which was at that point still not finalized or ratified by the union, so they really didn't spend much time on that. The rest of it was on the Articles seven and eight, which requested the TC building articles on the renovation and the request for design funding to go into the development, design development phase. At the end, there was, as you can probably imagine, there was a lot of discussion about lots of things that we have talked about here, that they have talked about on their committee, but in the end, they voted one unanimously to, they did not feel, the members did not feel, or it did not pass, the motion to pass over them. They felt that they should take a position on them and not a position on passing over, so that failed. And on the positions of each article, and the chair is here, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, one unanimous, one majority vote to vote, to recommend disapproval of both articles. So that was what the meeting was, it was, they had the presentations from Mr. Roy, actually, I think Mr. Jeffries gave both of them, but Mr. Roy was there. And so that's the committee report there. This evening's capital planning committee got canceled because we had two members not there and we only had one thing to present, so the one thing that was going to be presented will just be put on to the next meeting that we'll have, which is the twenty-third. Okay, Uma Flowers, host community agreement. So I would recommend to everybody that we would be prepared to take this up on the twenty-third. As I told the, their council last week and themselves, the applicants themselves, that we're really spending our time thinking about special town meeting, but we want to hit the ground running on the twenty-third, we really want to come up with anything. So if you read through and you have any recommendations for modifications, changes, any questions you have, please submit them to the town manager between now and then so that we're not delaying, I really want to get this off the ground. It's really, for the most part, a pro forma agreement. We want to review it, obviously, but I think everything that's going to be in there, we've done it with the previous applicant on Mass Ave that, of course, retracted their application because of zoning issues, so we've gone through this and we should have a good feel for what we want in the agreement.
I did have one question on this, I did, I did read through this, but I, the tracked changes here are, because I haven't done one of these before.
Yep.
You know, so the tracked changes here are relative to what the previous agreement, the previous version that we used before, when, the one that the town used before, that got withdrawn, or?
No, this is the version that they submitted.
Okay.
But has town councils recommended languages, that's the tracked pieces. That is actually, reads more, it's easier to read through than the version that we had been working with prior to and actually covers more items that are more beneficial to the town.
Can we have the other one in the Google Drive just as a comparison?
It is, yep, not in tonight's, but it's in the prior meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so that one will be the next agenda. So discussion on the next week's special town meeting warrant articles and consent calendar. So the first one is consent calendar, so everybody should have gotten the email from the town manager that the article that got sent out to everybody had a typo for the group.
Grade.
The grade, I'm sorry, not the grade, the grade of the salary admin plan. So we're pulling that from the consent calendar and that will be addressed directly. And we're doing that just so not to confuse anybody. Anything on the consent calendar, we want it to be exactly as it was in the warrant that was mailed to everybody so there's no, it really precludes any explanation or questions that people might have, so. Then, the actual articles, so I guess, everybody, did everybody get the motion?
No, no, I gotta update it and send those out.
Okay, so we took, we had discussion last week and as we prepare, as the town manager and we all prepare for the motion sheet, we want to know how we're addressing seven and eight, how they are being introduced. Now, it was talked last week and I will be very open that I support the idea of passing over both of these, there was discussion about it. And since the select board is going to be the ones who introduce both seven and eight, I want to make sure that we're all in agreement that we, the initial motion is going to be to pass over those articles because of all the late-breaking information and the lack of, and the new numbers and everything. Is there any objection from the board to introduce them that way?
Not from me.
I don't have an issue with that at all.
It is, I mean, we talked about this, we had a pre-meeting with the town manager and town council and the Finance Committee Chair was there and the town moderator was there, we talked about these. Obviously, passing over is a debatable motion, so people can speak their mind about how they feel about it. But I think that, no, we'll hate, we'll know this, we'll know how this generally is going to go because the article before, the town moderator has agreed that both presentations will be done and that will be the discussion article on anybody who has any questions about things. And depending upon how that goes, I mean, it may be very apparent that passing it over is going to be what everybody wants. If not, we'll introduce it and people can debate it, but I think we really want to be on the same page on this. So I think that's.
So we're in agreement.
We're all in agreement.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And the other, just two more, the demolition delay bylaw article.
Everybody saw that text change?
No, that was sent, yeah, I'll read it.
Okay.
So.
So there was a second?
No.
Okay.
Town council drafted the amendment to that section, section D, that, so the wording would not mean that you had to meet A through D of that section. So the amendment, so the original motion would read as is the language in the warrant. And then immediately after that's read, a motion to amend the original motion would be read by its chairman, is reading that motion. And it would read, I move to amend Article fourteen by adding to the demolition delay bylaw, chapter one thirty-four, section four, subsection D, paragraph one, after the statement in quotes, "Evidence shall include," end quotes, the phrase, start quotes again, "at least one, but in the discretion of the Historical Commission, more than one of the following." And to your point, colon, at the end of that comment. So that, I reached out to the Historical Commission, Richard McGrath, the chairman, and they, he liked the language and didn't think the Historical Commission would have an issue with that amendment at all. And he would be making that presentation, answering any, not presentation, but answering questions on that article as well.
Cool, excellent. And then the last one is Article three, which we now, as we sign tonight, we do have the ratified fire union contract.
Yes, so I can, I'll hit, I'll go over that for the public, just to get some information out there. So as we went into negotiations, the fire union, and the board knows this, this is more for everybody else, the fire union employees indicated that wages were well below their peers in comparable towns. So we performed a compensation analysis and it was indicative that they were, in fact, below the average of comparable communities. And four years ago, the fire chief created a long-term staffing plan to move the paramedic level service, to move to a paramedic level service, and we've been following that. level service, to move to a paramedic level service, and we've been following that plan by adding a one, one full-time position to the fire department budget in order to have enough full-time paramedics that we can apply for licensure. But due to the low wages, we haven't been able to attract qualified, already-trained paramedics, so we've had to hire EMTs that have the, we've had to put through all the training, which is 18 months or longer, you know, depending, during the pandemic, it was longer. So that's, this plan also addresses that, to make sure we address the, the wages properly, that we can hopefully get qualified paramedics going, and maintain them going forward. So as a part of our compensation analysis, we surveyed seven communities, that included Air, Pepperell, Rutland, Sterling, Townsend, Westminster, and Winchenden. And the results indicated that the fire union rates were significantly below the average hourly rates for all positions, anywhere from 3% to 18%, depending on the position and whether it was the starting pay or the top step. So breakdown of the cost implications, this agreement's a two-year agreement, the first year includes a 3% COLA in year one, and it adds the ranks of the lieutenant paramedic and captain paramedic to the, to the grid, and this mirrors the ranks that EMTs have of full-time career EMT lieutenant and full-time career EMT lieutenant. It also creates stipends for fire prevention officer and training officer, $1,500 each, respectively. Year two of the agreement adjusts the wages by eliminating the first three steps of each position. And overall, year one cost is $39,944, and the projected cost for year two is $60,474. And the article itself is to ask for approval at town to ratify the funding of year one.
Which is, what is the funding?
$39,944.
Where is it from?
Oh, sorry, the salary reserve account, which is already in appropriation within our budget, so it's not asking for additional raise in appropriation for this cost.
Any questions? You guys have seen the others.
And I will, as promised, send this out to the Finance Committee, so they have a meeting next week at 6:00 PM prior to town meeting that this will be discussed, because I didn't have a scheduled meeting before, this week before town meeting.
Do you have any questions? Wait, okay. Any other items for the town meeting? I think we've taken positions and everything, I think those are the final ones, right?
Yes. So I will update the motions, I'll send them out to everybody so everyone has them, so you can become familiar with which ones you're going to be reading. And obviously, if the consent calendar passes, we just move past those articles later on.
Yep. Yeah, you may want to, I know in the past, we put like CC in front of a consent calendar so it just.
Oh, okay.
So that, for everybody, for us and for the town moderator, so that we know that that was part of the consent calendar, I know that's what we've done, maybe not in your tenure, but in the past, and it just makes it easy, so you don't like, not flipping back and forth what was on the consent calendar. Okay, so, following up, we have upcoming meetings. Ironically enough, our next meeting, special town meeting, next Tuesday, 7 o'clock, please get there early to sign in. Please note, as the town manager has said last week and maybe even before, but we will be following the same COVID protocol that we have in the past few meetings, so everybody will be seated, you know, a distance apart, unless you're sitting with somebody from your own household. Everybody will be required to wear a mask, and if you're not going to wear a mask or you can't wear a mask, there will be an overflow room where you can still see the meeting and participate in the meeting. We do ask for people to get there on time so we can start on time and be prepared to ask whatever questions you have in advance. We want to make sure everybody is heard, now doing town moderator stuff, but we want to make sure everybody's heard, but we also want to make sure that everybody's time is respected, too, so. The hope being we all see everybody there next Tuesday. And then, then on the 23rd, we're back to our normal select board meeting, right back here. Any public comment from the public? Any public comment from the board? None?
I have an announcement, really, just a reminder that the pancake breakfast will be at the Senior Center Eagle House tomorrow from 8:00 AM till 10:00 AM.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Good night, everyone, hope to see you next week at the special town meeting. Until then, take care of yourselves, take care of each other.